Good morning, good evening. We're so used to having our Board of Supervisors meetings in the morning. It's nice to be offsite and it's nice to be here in the evening in the city of Camarillo. Could we please have the roll call?
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks. Here. And being in the city of Camarillo, a special meeting of our Board of Supervisors in the evening. And this is brought to us at the suggestion of Supervisor Long, so I'm going to turn it over to her now.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We start our meetings out with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm very pleased this evening to have invited and have present with us to do the presentation of colors and the pledge. The Mi Casa Service Unit serves Girl Scouts from Camarillo, Mission Oaks, and Somas. So, the Girl Scout program teaches the importance of personal responsibility, the value of goal-setting, spirit of teamwork, and the thrill of accomplishment. So with us today, tonight, we have Jessica and Angela Shiflett from Troop 60192, and also Isabel Marsilian. We have Shelby Richards from Troop 060192. We have Nola Appelke from Troop 60811. We have Mia Kinch from Troop 60811. Kyla Martin from Troop 61055. And Reagan Schrader from Troop 60811. And we'll turn it over to the troop to give us a pledge of allegiance and presentation of colors.
Color guard, attention. Will the audience please stand? Color guard, post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Color guard, on your colors. Thank you. Please be seated.
Would you like to come up here, Girl Scouts and the daisies, and come on up and have your picture taken up here on the dais? Come on. You can sit in our chairs and lead us. All right, moms, get ready. You did a great job. Thank you.
Yeah. You nailed it.
Yeah. Good job.
Lori, you're in.
Okay.
Well, that's the way to say it.
Hi. Hi, girls of the supervisors.
All right. Thank you, Girl Scouts.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So who are we going to bet's going to be the one that's going to be sitting here in the future? In your chair, okay.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate the beginning pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Girl Scouts, and daisies and brownies. Our next item on the agenda then is our minutes of the meeting of October 18th. And do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, they are unanimously approved, and we will go to our agenda review. This is a time when we ask our county executive officer if there are any changes to the agenda.
Just a few, Chair Parks. Item 13?
The one on the far left, is it? The white one.
You abstaining?
Yes, you're abstaining. And you'll be abstaining for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, I guess so. I don't know. Can you hear me? No?
It's the white, the white button, it says mic.
How about that? Oh, there we go. Okay. IQ test, darn it. All right. Item 13, Healthcare Agency Healthcare Plan. Approval of and authorization for the auditor to increase the encumbrances for Carol Jablonecki, Palms Imaging, and Milliman. An approval of the Healthcare Agency Director to sign the Second Amendment to the agreement with Carol Jablonecki, the Eighth Amendment to the agreement with Milliman, and the agreement with Seaside Emergency Associates. A board letter and Exhibits 1 through 3 have been submitted. In addition, Agenda Page 4 was updated to reflect the board letter. Item 14, Healthcare Agency, VCMC. Approval of and authorization for the Healthcare Director to sign the MOU for participation in the Care Transitions Demonstration Project with Brain Injury Center of Ventura County. A board letter and Exhibit 1 have been submitted. And finally, Item 21, Fire Protection District, Second Public Hearing Regarding the Adoption of Ordinance Number 29. Request to continue to November 1st at 11:00 a.m. And that's it.
Okay, we have some recommended changes to our agenda. Does the Board wish to add any others? Or make a motion to accept the agenda as revised?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Bennett and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? That passes unanimously. At this time, I'm going to pass it back to Supervisor Long to do our moment of inspiration introduction.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased to have invited and have with us this evening Dr. Stephen Elf. Dr. Elf and others are part of the Ventura County Co-Creators, and they undertook a project he'll speak to us tonight about, to have a peace pole put in place in Camarillo at our Camarillo Library. So he's going to talk about that. Dr. Elf is a doctor of chiropractic and director of Ventura Spine and Nerve Center. And he is also a member of the Ventura, as I said, County Co-Creators, a non-denominational group of Ventura County residents who are working together to make the world a place that works for everyone. Their first project was to raise funds for a seven-foot limestone pole engraved with "May Peace Prevail on Earth." And I happened to have the great pleasure of being there for the unveiling of that. The symbol of peace was installed September 11th at the Camarillo Library, and the Co-Creators plan on hosting an annual event on the International Day of Peace. So, Dr. Elf, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. I really appreciate your invite to be here. I'm sorry that my Carolyn Ostrander couldn't be here with us, but she just was in the hospital the other day. So, I do have some other members of the Co-Creators that are here with me. Susan Seeds, Patricia Trude are two members that are also here with us tonight, so I want to acknowledge them. And also, I wanted to thank the City Council for approving our project and helping us get through that whole project so that we could have that installation of the peace pole at the library. Ventura County Co-Creators began in 2012. We were inspired by the works of Barbara Marx Hubbard. There are co-creator groups all over the world that are working together to bring about personal and social change. Now, unlike groups that focus on personal and spiritual growth but don't take social action in the world, and unlike social action groups that don't take the time to cultivate harmony and resonance among themselves, the Co-Creators groups call for love and action. Co-Creators choose to use their work and their relationships well with one another to create a positive future and co-create a world that works better for all people. So, when we first met, we wanted to do something for the community that would really make a difference. We looked around in our beautiful community here of Camarillo, and we saw so many groups that were already doing great things. Churches and civic groups and service organizations and the government agencies here. We thought, what can we do to bring these people together so we can co-create something great together? The idea came up as far as having a peace pole. And so, this has been done all over the world, and we thought, well, who would not be involved with that? Who wouldn't want to be involved with a peace pole? So, the installation and the celebration at the Camarillo Library was an event that really solidified how this co-creative process works. It all worked together. People came together from all walks of life, all the groups. There were churches involved, there were service groups involved, there was the county government and city government was involved, and we had a wonderful event so everybody could celebrate together. The co-creative process is happening all over the world. Many companies such as Dell, Procter and Gamble, and Sony, just to name a few, are refining customer service processes by making it a two-way and asking the users to co-create their own products. City administrations can co-create with citizens and invite them to imagine what it'd be like to experience the city. And London, the city of London, England, is doing this. So, this co-creative process is something that's going on throughout the world. However, a fundamental problem is facing humanity today. It's the illusion of separation and separation from each other, from each other, from nature, and from ourselves. The vast majority of all problems faced by humanity are caused by humanity, and they stem from the illusion of separation. And I'm a doctor of chiropractic, and I work with the nervous system that controls every function in the body. When that nervous system is not functioning properly, your body's not functioning properly, and you're going to have a breakdown as far as the overall function of the body. And I really think the planet is growing a new nervous system right now. Think about what's going on just with Facebook. Facebook in itself is the third-largest country in the world. Think about that. Amazing to think. Think about how many people are texting and twittering right now. The planet has created a massive nervous system that's rapidly connecting everyone else. For example, right now in the United States, a group of Native American are standing in solidarity in Standing Rock, North Dakota, to protect the earth and the waters of the earth. This is what Native people do. They're here to protect the land. And think about it, we're all native to the earth. We're all here as protectors of the earth, when you think about it. Their brave action has united not only the Native American tribes, but Native Americans and other people, including the Ventura County Co-Creators, from all over the entire nation and beyond. A new vision is being created. They're no longer feeling separate from others and from the nation. In the next 30 years, we could destroy our world, and yet with the very same powers, a combination of spiritual, social, and scientific, we can evolve our world. The co-creative process brings people together with not just an interest in some noble ideal, but a burning desire to see that ideal actualized. By aligning one group with another, we tap the power, resources available to each. The groups link with each other for the empowerment of all. Eventually, as they converge with one another, a sufficient unified field is built, which jumps the entire system to a new level. This is the co-creative process, and it's exciting to see it happen. This happened with us with the peace pole dedication. I want to leave you with a quote from Mother Teresa. "I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the water to create many ripples." I would like to add this by saying, those ripples created by a large stone cast by a group with a single positive purpose can bring a tidal wave of good. The Ventura County Co-Creators would like to thank you for what you're doing to create a better future and a better community that works better for everyone. We look forward to co-creating a community and a world that works better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elf. Thank you very much. And Board members, if you ever get a chance to the Camarillo Library, the peace pole is on the backside of the library, and it has a garden around it. It's lovely. Just a beautiful dedication. Thank you.
I look forward to seeing it. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is when we go to our consent agenda items, and these are, if the Board has any that they want to call out. Otherwise, I believe that would be 11 through 16.
Move the consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Long, second from Supervisor Bennett. And all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, that's approved unanimously. Okay, at this time, we will go to our public comments, and we have a list of public comments, and I'll go to the order of them. Our first is the Pleasant Valley School District Superintendent, Angelica Ramsey.
Angelica Ramsey. She's our new superintendent.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. I want to first thank Supervisor Long for inviting me here to introduce myself to the full Board. As you stated, my name is Angelica Ramsey, and I'm the new superintendent at Pleasant Valley School District here in Camarillo. I've just completed my 90th day on the job last week, so continuing to learn from our community. I've spent the first 90 days really listening to all of our stakeholders and what I consider our constituents within the school district, which include our students, our parents, our staff members. I have spoken to over 100 members of both staff and community members to really hear their perspective and to be able to gain some context about what my job entails. I think a myth is that you come in and because you have a degree or you have some experiences, you know what to do. And that's probably the sure way of failing and failing quickly, is to come in and think that you know everything. So, slow and steady, learning from all, and really gaining a good, I think, grasp of not only the school district but the city of Camarillo and Ventura County. I'm coming from Northern California, from Santa Clara County. I'm a Californian native. I was born in the Bay Area, grew up in the Central Valley in Stockton, and so this is my first time in Ventura County. I've been in several counties in California, and this has to be by far the most beautiful county. Love living in Camarillo. My husband and I really have felt blessed. He's working at the Ventura County Office of Education and really coming in to be a part of the community already. I've become a board member for the Boys and Girls Club, and I know you'll hear a little from Roberto later on and the wonderful things that are happening at the Boys and Girls Club. A board member at the Chamber of Commerce and a Rotarian also joined the Optimist Club. And so, wanting to make sure that whatever I do, it's a life of service, and in this instance, it's service to our students. So, just really blessed to be here, wanted to say hello, meet you all, introduce myself, and say that our school district and me, we're all in service of Ventura County. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out the amazing support we have here in the audience this evening. I have two of my board members, Trustee Long and Trustee Rust, and that just goes to show that cohesive board that I have that really is going to help move our agenda forward to making sure that all of our students meet their highest potential. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome and congratulations. It sounds like you've got a wonderful challenge in front of you, and I know you'll do great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you got your booster club, too. Our next speaker then is the Camarillo Library Director. And that's Joe Rolfe.
Who's also new, so welcome.
I am. Angelica and I started at the same month, almost the same week, actually. It's a pleasure to speak before you, to introduce myself to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much, Supervisor Long, for inviting me to introduce myself, to put a voice to the face and a face to the voice. Obviously, I'm not from around here. I'm originally from England. I've lived here in the same place, actually in Ventura, for 18 years. I was supervising librarian at Camarillo Public Library when the library became an operation under the municipal guidance through Library Systems and Services. So, I was one of the people standing in line on January 3rd, 2011, when we were giving out 25,000 library cards in the first three months. So, it was an extraordinary experience to take that step, to make it into a wonderful, thriving, community center point. It's such a privilege to be working at the library, to be back here. I was a library director when I was supervising librarian for three years, and then I went to be library director at Moore Park. So, coming back, it's so refreshing to see many of the things that I started and I was part of the foundations of, to see them still thriving and still growing. We want to serve you. As Angelica said, the library is also a service organization, and the team is set up to be an anchor for democracy, to demonstrate it, to demonstrate so much of democracy is a process that people see behind the scenes. I think it's something that you're doing and thinking about and acting upon every day that you're in your role. What we're doing is representing that in a kind of a tangible form so that we make sure that literacy is part of the foundation of what we're doing for the community. And that's not just literacy in terms of reading books, but it's digital literacy as well. So, everything that we're doing, I mean, if you come past the library, you can see that very often we don't have a parking space in the library. It's because it's such a focal point for all things literacy-related, and I have the privilege to walk past the peace pole every day because I walk around the building every single day, and that is also a privilege to be part of what that represents. I just have something that I'd like to give you all. This is hot off the press today. It's our brand-new newsletter, so you can see what's coming up in November and December. I have one for each of you, and I'm going to hand that over to Lori. Thank you so much for letting me speak today and introduce myself. If we can ever do anything for you, please don't hesitate to let me know.
Thank you. Welcome.
Madam Chair.
The white button?
There we go. Madam Chair, the times I've come to the Camarillo Library, it's just a special, I know there's something special about it. I don't know what it is, but what a place for the community. It's like people really feel like they own that library and they use it, and it's a remarkable place. So, I understand what you were trying to convey there, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a place of magic. It's a place of magic.
Thank you. Even the outside is. People really enjoy the plaza in the front and places to sit. It is a very good community place, place of community. Great. Thank you. Let's see, our third public comment speaker is Roberto Martinez, and he is the Camarillo Boys and Girls Club Director, and we have seen him at the Board of Supervisors in Ventura, too.
Yes. Well, thank you, county supervisors, for this opportunity to speak. And Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Powers, I'd really like to thank Supervisor Long for this opportunity and this invitation. She serves on our Board of Directors and does a phenomenal job right there. And just a little bit about me, I am new to Camarillo. I've been here five years now, but I grew up in San Bernardino, and I was the second oldest of six children. And I went to school out there, and I had great teachers, and I went to great schools. And I had two great parents, and they both were hardworking, they both worked long hours, and they both worked in... and they both worked in cities that we did not live in. So, after school, my older brother, my younger brother, and my cousin, we would walk to the Boys and Girls Club. And that filled in that supervision gap from when my parents would get off work and they were able to go pick us up. And at that Boys and Girls Club, I had great experiences and I have great memories. And it was a great shiny beacon in the middle of that neighborhood, in a neighborhood that was oftentimes uncertain and solace in challenging times. And I really look back on those experiences and the mentoring that I received from the staff members at the Boys and Girls Club as a strong foundation that helped with the foundation that my parents had built in me and my siblings. And coming out here to Camrio, we have great parents, hard-working parents. We have phenomenal schools with a great superintendent and a great school board. However, school ends at 2:00, 3:00, parents get off work at 5:00, 5:30, and then oftentimes, these parents do not work down the street from the Boys and Girls Club, and they got to get on that 101. And as many of us have been on that 101 around 5:00, 5:30, we know it isn't always moving at a neck-breaking pace. So, the Boys and Girls Club, we step in and we fill that void. We fill that supervision gap for over 400 kids a day who come to our Boys and Girls Club, and you know, they get a little bit of chance to get the wiggles out. We serve nutritious meals every day, and after they get their wiggles out, play a game of pool, play a game of foosball, play a game of soccer, it's homework time. And we have mandatory homework time, Monday through Thursday, for all 400 kids. And we have tutors from the university, we have staff on site to help them with their homework, make sure that they're getting it done right, and then from there, they can go on to more interest-based activities. At that phenomenal peace pole dedication we had, we had our dance group over there putting on a show. So, we have dance club, we have drama club, we have sports, we have a middle school program for middle school kids, we have art programs, we have all sorts of different things, technology, Legos, and all those things for those hours after school when kids are most likely to get into things that they probably shouldn't be getting into. And we've all seen it happen, kids at the park, kids in their apartment complexes, in the quad, kids on the internet. There's a lot of information out there, but if they go to the Boys and Girls Club, they're getting mentoring, they're getting opportunities to develop new skills, and they're building friendships. And most importantly, we're supporting the working families of our community. So, at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, parents can get to the Boys and Girls Club, and they pick up their children who have their homework done. They pick up their children who have had an opportunity to engage in different, you know, skill-building activities, and all they have to do is go home, sit across each other at a dinner table, talk about their day, and not have that struggle that many of us have had with our children of, why isn't your homework done? Oh, my goodness, you know what time it is? I've been at work all day. I can't come here and help you with your homework. I'm tired. No. All they got to do is sit at a dinner table, right across from each other, look each other in the eye, and hear about how their children's day was. And that's building stronger families, that's building a stronger community, and we have children from different parts of the city all coming together every day at the Boys and Girls Club. So, we're building stronger communities right there as well. And we offer all of this for $100 a year for the first child, 60 for the second, 30 for the third, and a lot of our children are on scholarships. Now, it costs us around $500, $600 to serve a youth for a year. However, thanks to the community's support, we are able to, you know, fill in that gap as well, to provide these opportunities for all our kids. Another way we're doing that is tomorrow, 30 seconds, tomorrow, we are having a pasta dinner. So, if any of the families or anybody in this room gets off that 101 and does not want to have to go home and get on that stove and make dinner, you can come to the club, and dinner's on us, $10 for adults, $7 for kids, and we even have a drive-through. And that way, once again, parents can go home, sit across each other, and learn how their children's day was. Thank you.
And it's presto pasta, too.
Presto pasta.
And you have a drive-through.
Yes.
For the pasta pickup. Roberto, as you can hear, does a great job. He's a great passion, and when he moved up to be our CEO, I knew he would really rise to the challenge here, and he does 400 kids a day we get at our club. That's pretty amazing here in Camrio.
One of the best presentations I think I've heard about why you have Boys and Girls Clubs. You really did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I share a couple of words? I want to thank you for what you said, you know, you said the kids come out at 3:00 or 3:30, and then the parents come out at 5:00, and they go down the 101. So, it's really important that you vote for AA to the Transportation Center and get those parents.
I just want to thank the Star for their endorsement.
Much sooner. We need that. Thank you. Thank you for the excellent presentation.
Yeah, I do want to do a shout-out to the community of Camrio for supporting their Boys and Girls Club. I mean, you really hit the nail on the head. You charge $100, and it costs $500, and that gap is made up because people in Camrio say, hey, we're going to take care of the kids of Camrio. And that sense of community is the most valuable thing a community can have, and Boys and Girls Clubs really are, I think, probably your greatest measure of how much of a sense of a community, you know, exists, and it's really strong here in Camrio.
Well, it works both ways. The community takes care of the youth of the Boys and Girls Club of Camrio. In turn, the youth take care of Camrio as well.
Yeah. Now, great presentation, great idea how you really related that, that the hard-working parents get the special additional support, which is great, and they come back and have a real life at home with the family and all that stuff, where a lot of people, I got to get dinner, I got to do this, I got homework. You really changed a lot of people's lives, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
All right. So, I don't know if I have any other public comment cards. Mr. Cushing isn't here. I know he was with the chamber and was going to speak, but I don't see him here. So, let's go ahead and go on to our next item on the agenda, and I believe that is Board Comments. We'll start with Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you so much. I have a couple of items I'd like to share with you. I had Wednesday, I attended the Kiwanis Firefighter of the Year for Oxnard Firefighter at the Tower Club in Oxnard, well-attended, you know, by, it was kind of nice to honor our firefighters. Also additionally, I went over to grand opening of the New Dawn Counseling and Consulting Incorporated in Oxnard. This is located at 2200 Outlet Drive and Suite 430, and they provide mental health services and partner with the VCT, VC Behavioral Health, and they help at-risk children and families. Additionally, I had my staff member Tracy attended the Seroptimus International of Oxnard Brass for Cause Event. This is really important. We presented a certificate, and those individuals do a lot of good work and fundraise for cancer patients throughout. And additionally, I also attended the Celebration of Food Day at Ventura County Public Health at La Colonia Community Center and Garden in Oxnard, and presented a certificate to, again, Rigo Vargas, Salva Suxito, Silvia Lopez Navarro, for the great work they do for the community, providing nutritious health education for the community. Also, Bill Gallagher, my chief of staff, attended the Pastor Edgar Mohorco's 30th anniversary at the Clergy Council at the Elks Club in Oxnard, and it was well-attended by many community service employees. He received 30 years of community service by the VC probation and also the Board of Supervisors. And Mohorco deals a lot with gang intervention, youth outreach, prisoner reentry, and also his work in homelessness for homeless individuals. And that's my report.
Thank you.
And I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list, and I'd like to call out Tony Gray. Tony Gray was a leader for the community, Filipino community. He really provided a lot of leadership for the city of Oxnard, for the community and the county of Ventura. I'd like to name him out, and also I'd like to adjourn the rest of this, individuals on this list. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bennett? Pretty soon, we'll all have voted instead of pushed our buttons for the microphone.
Yeah, that's right. I have pushed this. I want to mostly take this opportunity to say thank you to Supervisor Long for letting us come back to Camrio and to be here in this city. It's always good for the Board to interact in a lot of different ways, and going out in the evenings is one of the ways that we choose to do this, and as we come closer and closer to the end of a great term of service, and we won't go down that road tonight, right? But as we get closer and closer to that, I just have a real appreciation for what she's done for us, and so thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you. And Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board Members, for agreeing to take our show on the road, as it were, and to have this meeting in Camrio. Very important show in Camrio. I appreciate the city's work with us in setting this up, and of course, all of our great staff in making this work, and everyone coming out tonight. It is a great city, and it is a city I will be living in in retirement. I live here now, but will be enjoying even more. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory, and I'd like to just mention a couple of things. I had the opportunity last week to attend the Santa Paula Latino Town Hall 20th Anniversary Awards Dinner. Latino Town Hall, as was just said, has been around for 20 years. They have become one of the premier voices for the community of Santa Paula in representing folks that have great need and interact with many of our county agencies, and they do a great job, and they recognize some prominent people from the community, youth and educators, and Kay Wilson Bolton, who we all know, who has been such a strong advocate for the homeless in Santa Paula. So, we had a terrific turnout of our county healthcare agency leadership team and public health present at the Latino Town Hall. It was very much appreciated, so I was happy to be there to celebrate with them. And then to also, it was one of those weeks where I had the opportunity to help break ground for the new fire station in Fillmore, fire station at 133 C Street in Fillmore. It's Station 27, and it replaces, at a different location, the existing Station 27 has been in the community for 50 years. So, this was great fun, and it was nice to have the city there, certainly our fire chief and all the fire personnel, the city of Fillmore Fire, and a lot of excitement about this new station going in. It's in a prime spot, right, stone's throw from the 126 on C Street in Fillmore, and when it is complete in two years, and it's going, and the design, of course, is first class, and it'll be much appreciated for all of the Santa Clara Valley, but certainly Fillmore was very appreciative of the cooperative work we've done, the fire district and public works and others to get to the day of breaking the ground. So, that was great fun. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And Supervisor Foy, you have some comments?
Yeah, just real quick, turning a memory on the people on that list, and I, too, want to thank Camrio for letting us be here. We always enjoy coming out here on a regular basis when we can. It's great for the people to see us out here. It's a good show that we do, and hopefully, we're going to have some great things tonight. And I do, I know for Supervisor Long, her probably her last time to bring the show here, but somebody had served so long for the people here in Camrio, so thank you.
Thank you. And then just a couple of comments from me. One is to congratulate Cal State Channel Islands. They received the recognition of the president's Higher Education Community Service Honor role, and part of that is being recognized for service involving the homeless, the environment, and health. And students are also encouraged, as they were mentoring area high schoolers and encouraging them to go to college, which I think is wonderful. Some students don't really realize that they have that opportunity and how wide that opportunity can be. And then also, that award recognizes the students at Cal State Channel Islands who contributed 218,000 hours, 218, 852 hours for the 2014-2015 years. You just realize what another benefit that we all receive from having Cal State Channel Islands in your backyard here in Camrio. And then also, just announcement, as Supervisor Zaragoza had mentioned about Measure AA, we're putting together a quarterly dinner series, and it's going to be about transportation of the future. And it's held at a restaurant, and the discussion will be talking everything from hydrogen cars to the shared economy, being able to use Uber and all that, and driverless cars. So, I think getting an understanding of what the future has to hold will help us to make some adjustments. I think whether we adjust or not, it's still coming, right? So, that should be an exciting dinner event, and people are encouraged to attend, and they can go on to my webpage and sign up if they're interested. The next item on our agenda is our CEO comments, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Powers.
Madam Chair, if I might just add one more comment. In cooperation with the Sheriff and Ventura County Fire and the Watershed Protection District, Red Cross, et cetera, there will be a meeting on Thursday, November 3, focused on the Camrio Springs and Camrio Springs residents, and it's at the Freedom Center, U-Bank Street, and it will have agency presentations from the National Weather Service, Ventura County Watershed Protection District, Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, Ventura County Fire, Ventura County Animal Services, and Ventura County Red Cross. And of course, that is to work with the Camrio Springs residents, answer their questions and concerns they have, and in preparation for the 2016 winter season. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Just a few.
At least we're not voting no. He's abstained again.
I did.
White button.
I know, I'm hitting the white button. I don't know why.
Far right, Mike.
Right on the green one here, Mike.
I know. It's just not doing it. It's just not doing it.
The mic itself has a button on the base.
Yeah, that's the ticket, I think.
You're on now.
That's it. Fourth time's the charm. Woo-hoo! All right.
Let's go on to a different report.
Yeah, that's right.
You've had your time.
That's right. Hey, there you go. Whatever takes.
He does a great job running the county.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Peter. No further comments. That's it. I did want to recognize, Hopes Haven is a charity right here based in Camrio, and they had their event this past Saturday night, attended by Kim Milstein, our VCM CEO, as well as a Brighton New Bay Director of our clinics, and they're just a great supporter of our health system, too, as well. They provide a video system for our Peds Unit in the new hospital wing, as well as 60 iPads for children in our hospital. So, also, this October 31, right here in these chambers, actually, there will be, Cal State Channel Islands is putting on a water issue panel. I believe that's from 1 to 3, Supervisor Bennett will be on that panel, and our very own Public Works Director, Jeff Pratt, will be leading that course here, so that should be very good. And I just wanted to mention, too, we're here in Camrio, and there's a lot of county departments here that are centralized here, actually. Headquarters here for Fire Department is here, Sheriff is here, Department of Child Support Services, airports, animal services, as well as many of our medical facilities are here, including the Los, bless you, we have a health facility for you. Las Postas Family Medical Clinic is right here, and so a lot of our county services are centralized here, and it's been a great partnership with the city and working with the community here. And then just also want to congratulate Chris Dunn, who is from the Sheriff's Department. He's going to be the new police chief here at Camrio, wonderful, wonderful guy, and homegrown right here, too. It's his hometown, so he's terrific. What's that? Yeah, he's great. And just want to appreciate City Manager Dave Norman. We have a great partnership with him, and I look forward to working with him. So, thank you very much. That's it.
And this is a little bit comfortable for the Board members. We all, five, sit on the Ventura County Transportation Commission that meets in these chambers, and also the Ventura Council Governments and the Airport Authority, and it's very convenient because of the central location of Camrio, so it's nice to be able to have these chambers available, and we thank the city for that.
Madam Chair, I also like to thank Supervisor Long for bringing us here to Camrio. I have quite a few relatives that live here in Camrio, too, so, you know, we had to combine the 3rd District and the 5th District, so we get more votes. But I want to thank the Camrio residents, excellent, excellent city and beautiful work that you do for the city. Thank you so much.
All right. So, at this time, then, we can go on to get a few items done of our regular agenda before we go to our 7:00 PM time certain. So, the first regular agenda item is Item 23, and this is with the healthcare agency, our Behavioral Health Department regarding ratification of some approvals.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Powers. Fortunately, Elaine Crandall is a little under the weather, so she asked me to present on her behalf. It's my pleasure. My name is John Schipper. I'm the Adult Division Manager for Behavioral Health, and Item 23 before you is asking to ratify the submission and to accept the Assisted Outpatient Treatment Grant from the Department of Outpatient Treatment Grant from the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA for short. This is a $4 million grant for a period of four years. That's intended to implement a program that we're calling ASSIST. You might be happy to know that that's not an acronym, so no one's gonna have to be required to remember what that stands for. It was one of the things we insisted upon. So, ASSIST is basically a play off of the name of the program or the type of the program, Assisted Outpatient Treatment, otherwise known as LoRAS Law. There is no matching funds required for this grant. However, VCBH has committed $2.5 million in addition to additional funding to support this program. In March of 2016, the board approved the authorization to implement Assisted Outpatient Program in compliance with LoRAS Law. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for its progressiveness in adopting LoRAS Law back in March. I want to thank the CEO, Mr. Powers, and his staff for their support. The Behavioral Health Advisory Board's role in bringing ASSIST to Ventura County cannot be overstated. Specifically, I want to acknowledge Ratan Bhagwani, for whom LoRAS Law has been a focus going back many years. Also, Mary Hafner, who's been leading an AOT Implementation Work Group for the BHAB for several months. And the chairperson, Janice Gardner, who was actually the person who brought the SAMSA Grant possibility to our attention. In June 2016, VCBH was one of 27 applicants for this SAMSA Grant opportunity. Ultimately, 17 grants were awarded, and I'm proud to report that we were one of six funded at the maximum amount of $1 million a year. And I would add, we're the only recipient in California. It was a Herculean effort with letters of commitment, and there's a distinction to be drawn there between letters of support versus letters of commitment. We got letters of commitment where these various agencies actually committed to partner actively with us. And it came from National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, VCMC, Vista Del Mar, Superior Court, Offices of the Public Defender and District Attorney, Probation, Sheriff's Department, and the Ventura, Oxnard, and Simi Police Departments. Within VCBH, it took the combined efforts of operational staff along with fiscal and contracts and quality improvement staff to put together this grant submission. We anticipate serving 60 unduplicated clients a year, which is an increase of 40 over what had been presumed before the grant was awarded. With that, we're requesting the addition of four fixed-term positions to support the additional capacity. And with that, I'm gonna...
Thank you. And then, that is a ratification, correct?
Correct.
All right. And this requires a four-fifths vote? And so, at this time, do we have a motion?
I want to ask some questions.
Okay, we have some questions.
I appreciate, you know, where this is going, and this is great. You said a couple of things. We've committed $2.5 million, is that what you said?
Yes.
In addition, where's that money coming from?
That's a combination of in-kind support, which is coming from the court and various partners, Public Defender, some AMHSA funding, which is what the board voted on previously, and then what we call FFP, or essentially this drawdown of Medi-Cal dollars.
Okay. All right. So, I understand that. And then, these four people, are you hiring four new people? Are you just moving people from other places to do these fixed positions? What are you doing here?
Now, those are new hires.
New hires.
Yes. So, what we're expecting is that there's gonna be an added demand on services. So, the whole thrust of the program is to essentially sort of invite and solicit referrals that are currently not being made. So, we're using another grant-funded program, which I don't know if you're gonna be familiar with, called Rise. And it does primarily outreach and engagement. And the added sort of demand, it's expected that we're going to add the positions to be able to address those added requests for service.
Okay. So, you're making the assumption that we're gonna get some demand. So, are you hiring these people before we get it, or are you waiting to see? Or what are you doing here?
No. So, we have, one of the expectations, the requirements of the grant, is that we have to be implemented before February 1st. And so, we are in the process of developing the workflow, along with the staffing up both ourselves and the contracted provider.
Okay. I guess I just get a little concerned, because if we don't get to that level, then we've hired people we don't need, or what's happened? Is it one of those, when we get them, then we start hiring? Or how do we do this? Because what you're saying, we're making the assumption we're gonna need. I have no problem with the idea of, you know, we're busy, we need the people to do the work. I just have a little bit of a difficult time. How many people do this now for the 40 that you're doing and you're hiring for? Is there eight people that do it for 40, and that's why you're assuming that four more for 60?
No, this is a brand-new program. So, there isn't, referrals of this sort aren't being addressed in the way that Assisted Outpatient Treatment is going to allow us.
Okay. You said we had 40 already, then they were going to 60. Is that what I heard you say earlier?
So, before the grant opportunity became available, when we were doing our initial preliminary sort of planning, we had perceived of 20 at a time, 40 over the course of a year. The added funding allowed for greater capacity. So, we went from the expectation it was gonna be 20 at a time to 30 at a time. And again, the expectation being annually, it's gonna go from 40 a year to 60 a year.
Okay. So, the only difference, we just don't know. We're just making some assumptions here.
Well, one of the things that we did, we're in the good position of not being able to be sort of a pioneer so much. And so, one of the things we did, Judge Bish, along with representatives of the Public Defender's Office and District Attorneys, and, oh, I'm sorry, County Council, we went to Orange County, where they've actually been implementing for the past 18 months. And in part, based on their numbers, and they saw a ramp up, kind of like what you're rightly alluding to. We've derived a sense, you know, correcting for the difference in the size of our counties, that indeed, we can reasonably expect that we can find and will be treating, again, 30 people at a time, 60 over the course of a year. So, it's not, we're not just coming up with numbers. It's based on...
And I believe you had a reason to do it. I guess I'm just, a lot of times, we assume it could be a lot more, it could be a lot less, it could be a few. I'm just, my thing is, we could do, we'd like to be able to opportunity to hire one person, two, and then we come back for a few more. I just don't like the idea of hiring, not knowing, because then we've got people there, you know, what do we do if it doesn't pan out that way? That's my only issue, is trying to figure how to manage this and make some assumptions. And/or, I'm bringing some other people from someplace else that are already here, and we're gonna use those people. That's where I come from. I struggle a little bit with that. Just make an assumption, let's just go hire them, that kind of thing.
Madam Chair, I think it's gonna happen, you know. First of all, I just want to commend Elaine Crandall and Janice Gardner. I'm a member of the BHAB Board, and we've been discussing this concern for quite a while, and I'm sure they're gonna be there. We're gonna have those individuals that are gonna need this service. And I just want to commend, you know, Elaine, and also Janice Gardner, and all the behavioral board people that are there, volunteers that do such a good job. So, I think this is an excellent program that we need, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
And I know, Mr. Powers, you wanted to say...
Just a quick comment, a couple of things. First of all, these are fixed-term positions that we're adding, Supervisor Foy, so we're limiting it there. The other thing is, unlike a lot of other counties, we were already, behavioral health was already providing a fair amount of outpatient services. So, they were able to assess, you know, rather than just sort of starting from scratch and wondering what's out there, they're already treating a lot of these folks right now. So, I think they have a better understanding of the likely patient population that's out there. In addition, this funding will allow the staff to assess what's working and see if this is working or not. And so, the additional funding will allow us to report back on whether these evidence-based practices are actually having the outcomes that we would like to see, so.
I might just, if I could, add a couple of points on that. One of the things that Assisted Outpatient Treatment intends to do is essentially give us a tool to essentially engage people who are otherwise resistant. And these are people who, by virtue of the fact that they're not connected to behavioral health, tend to be utilizers in other systems, which is why we're getting the commitment from the police, the courts. So, these are people who are impacting the system beyond behavioral health, despite our desire to want to treat them, are resistant to those efforts. And it's frankly, part of what comes with Assisted Outpatient Treatment is what they call the black robe effect. So, while we try not to employ the court-ordered component to it, it's that threat that we hope to use as leverage to sort of gain the ability to treat people who are otherwise, frankly, costing us all a lot of money.
And that's, and see, I agree with where you're going there. My only issue is just hiring all the people up front and doing it. That's why I have a hard time supporting that. I have no idea of supporting what you're doing. If you came in and said, "Look, we think we're gonna hire four people over the period of time. We'd like to probably get one on now, we'd probably come back," and that's, I'd have no problem with that. It's just, boom, lump sum of them. That's where I struggle with, otherwise. I understand where you're going with that.
I certainly understand your point, Supervisor, and perhaps what we can do is do a regular report back to your board. Because certainly, we're not gonna hire people, and if there's no work to be done, we're not gonna do that. So, we'll report back to you. We can do it every year, every six months or so?
Report back, but I'm just saying, the idea to go out and hire the people right now just doesn't seem right to me that we would do that until we have the demand. Because what if we only need two people? Then we've hired four. That's the hardest part for me, so.
It is, but this is also a new program that's being ramped up. So, they're not gonna be able to hire these people right away. Some of this is gonna take time, and this program's gonna start up in January. So, these things take time to onboard people and train them and so forth. It's not all gonna happen at the drop of a dime. It just takes time to get these programs up and going and training and working, to get people working together, so. So, we'll phase it in, and we'll watch it, and we'll report back to your board.
And we're gonna need that program. There's gonna be 60 people there, almost guaranteed.
Anybody says we're not gonna do the program, it's just the hiring, that's all.
Okay, I understand.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza, and a second from Supervisor Bennett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, and so, 4-1 then, and that motion passes. And I know you have another item, except I realize that we actually have a 6:30 time certain that's before you, so I would like to get to those 6:30, and involves people in the audience, and my apologies for skipping the 6:30 folks. And Brian, you're with us. We have Item 17 is our first 6:30. And do we have someone from the Treasury Tax Collector here? Why, the Treasury Tax Collector himself. My apologies for having you wait.
Thank you.
It's okay, he's used to it.
Madam Chair, honorable members of the board, Mr. Powers, I have the honor tonight of presenting to you for you to receive and file the report of investments for the month ending September 30th. I would not have cluttered your calendar out here tonight, except I was looking at the board's calendar, and it occurred to me that I might end up giving the September report in January. And to my way of thinking, that would probably not be a good service to the board, or to the citizens, or the other participants in the pool to wait that long. So, here I am. It is a good report. It shows a continuing increase in the earnings rate, up to .922, which is 92 basis points. That's up four basis points from where it was last month, which is a continuation of, say, a five- or six-month increase at a rate of four points per month. Earnings are good, 1.42 million. Ever since we broke the million-dollar mark, it's been holding at 1.4. While the size of the pool has actually been dipping, because there's no money coming in during the summer months. That will change, starting the 1st of November. If you looked going forward, the report says that going forward, the estimated yield is 1.09, which is one of the first times we've been over 1% in a long time. Actually, today, the going-forward earnings are 1.12, 112 basis points. So, that's a significant improvement. The report was written before we had the earnings reports from two of our benchmarks. Cal Trust, which is a joint powers authority that allows for local government investment pools to invest, is our closest benchmark. We routinely beat them by five to 10 actual basis points, and we've continued to do that this time. Their increase is three basis points a month over the last several months. Ours is four basis points increase, so the gap is widening between us. And the other one that I'm reporting is the state's Local Agency Investment Fund, which continues to be an enigma to me about how they can have so much money to invest and so many people working on it, and allow them still to be beaten by a small pool in Ventura County. But the fact is, we are on the order of 35 basis points over the state's Local Agency Investment Fund. And so, our benchmarks continue to suggest that we're doing well. Standard and Poor's continues to rate us very highly. They renewed our, excuse me, affirmed our AAAF rating in August. They are talking about fussing with the scoring protocol about how the ratings are earned, and that's going to draw some attention as time goes by. We may talk about that more at the Treasury Oversight Committee meeting, which is coming up. And of course, you're all invited to be there and watch Supervisor Foy chair the meeting. The, turning to, well, that's my report. I believe that the Federal Reserve will raise interest rates 25 basis points in December. I feel pretty good saying that, because 75% of the investment community believes they will, so for a change, I'm not the Lone Ranger on that. That'll make a difference in our yield, starting a couple of weeks before the actual raise might be announced. So, I'm looking forward to that. I'm here, of course, to answer any questions that the board has about the investment report. I would like to take just a couple of minutes to talk about collections.
Well, I know that Supervisor Foy has some riveting questions.
I just don't have a riveting question, but I do have to say that as I was at Medi-Cal, and thank you again for that, board, that I know that you have about $80 million of their money, and I asked them if they were with the county, and they said they are. And they said their best return comes from the work that you do. So, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, and that's good to hear.
Thank you. They are a valuable client. They, after they reorganized and ironed out their cash flow, they became a very good depositor. They're actually a drop-it-and-leave-it client, which of course, is what we like, because then we don't have to worry about unexpected withdrawals.
That's good.
Think you should get a little bit more. They have a few more bucks than that, so.
We're always shopping where our yield has come up enough so that we're way better than banks. Anybody that's storing their money in a bank is doing just that, storing it in a bank. And so, I've mentioned to all of the county agencies, for example, that this is the time to close those little bank accounts that they have out there and put the money in the pool, and let it be managed for greater income.
You even think about the small special districts that are out there that just have it sitting in a bank. It might be good to get the word out to them, too.
We try. We've had interest from one of the large cities that has not participated. Of course, the interest is all from candidates, but, so you never know how it's actually gonna turn out. But there is, there are some significant pots of money out there that we have not been able to reach.
I think the public and the taxpayers deserve us to do the best we can safely and with security that you have to get a good return. It's important for us to do that, make their money work.
I believe so. For example, this particular city, I said they're leaving $75,000 a year on the table. I didn't know they could afford that. So, we'll see how that goes.
All right. Thank you very much. So, this is a receive-and-file?
It is.
We have a couple of motions and a second. Any objections? Any abstentions? All in favor, say aye. There we go.
If you could give me just a couple of minutes to talk about the secured property tax collection. We'll be very brief. This is a big year for us, because we just made arrangements to combine our printing and mailing and processing... arrangements to combine our printing and mailing and processing with our bank, so that it's an all-in-one facility. So, where we, the bills have been in the mail. They're in everybody's mailbox now. And the common questions that are asked is, "This year, the paper is only black and white. No colored bill." Well, we saved a lot of money by not printing it on colored paper, so there you are. It's black and white. But the public is so worried about scams that they instantly believe that because it was on colored paper, it must be a scam. So, we're responding to those kinds of inquiries. Also, the paper is legal-sized paper for the first time, which is because there's so much stuff, we have to get on to the bill, both front and back, that we couldn't. It would have made two separate pieces of paper in the, just for the bill. So, we're answering questions about that, too. The mailing address for the payments is a post office box where the bank processing center is in Los Angeles. And so, people are leery of mailing their bill to a post office box in Los Angeles. And we tell them, "Well, the county is saving $200,000 just this year by doing it that way." And it's actually more secure, because the bill is only being handled once. We are having a very busy walk-in traffic of people who want to pay by November the 1st. A significantly higher percentage of people are paying both installments at the same time. And Supervisor Zaragoza was the first supervisor that I know of to pay his property tax bill, as he stepped right up to the counter and smiled the whole time.
I like to pay my bills. Thank you.
So, that process is going well, and it is an interesting time of year for us. And as always, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve you and to have the opportunity to serve the people of Ventura County. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Long?
Just a quick question. Have you been able to put perhaps on the website the information about the change in the bill to help defer to?
It's in red.
It's in red, okay.
It's in, in capitalized red letters on the front page.
Okay, okay.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, I just want to say, I appreciate you willing to look for opportunities to save $200,000. You figure what that's worth over the next five years, a million dollars or more, and that, that's great. Yeah, we're looking for those kind of things. With that kind of savings, you're going to pass us on some savings in our property taxes, or what?
Well, that's not entirely my responsibility. The assessor actually sets all the prices.
Oh, it's always that guy, yeah, okay.
And the auditor, this young fellow in front here is the one who adds all those special assessments that everybody wants to know about. So.
There we go, passing the buck.
It's great.
Not that, though.
This is the time of year where we spend a lot of time saying, "Oh, you got to go talk to the assessor," or, "Yo, you got to go talk to the auditor." It's great.
And Madam Chair, I want to thank, Your Honor, I want to thank your staff, because they smiled when I took my check over. Thank you so much.
Well, yeah, we tell people that when you come in, Supervisor, we have pizza.
Thank you. Thank you for the good service.
Good evening.
All right, let's go then to item 18, and this is recognizing the American Red Cross Operation Ride for the Red. And Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Very pleased to be able to present this here at our off-site meeting, and to recognize our American Red Cross. This is the Second Annual Ride for the Red. It's a bike ride in support of our veterans, armed forces, and military families. It will be happening on Saturday, November 12th, at 6:00 a.m. in Camarillo, at the American Red Cross Ventura County Chapter Office. So, I'm going to invite up, and then I'll read the resolution, to the podium, Melissa Livingston, who is, of course, known to us as our Chief Deputy Director of Human Services Agency, and the current Board Chair of the Ventura County Red Cross, Ken Bauer, who is the Ventura County Red Cross Board Member, and is, Diane's not here?
No.
If not, okay, Diane's not here. Okay. So, I'll read this, and then please offer, invite you to make some comments. Again, this is for Operation Ride for the Red, November 12th, and hosting the Second Annual Cycling Event in Camarillo to benefit, as I said, support to the Armed Forces Program. All proceeds from the event will benefit the Red Cross SAF Program, which aims to provide humanitarian support to military members, veterans, including 24/7 Global Emergency Communication Services, as well as support to military and veteran health care facilities across the country and overseas. Last year, Red Cross provided 355,000 emergency communication services to more than 115,000 military members and their families, distributed more than 136,000 care, comfort, and therapy items at military hospitals and medical facilities, and served nearly 23,000 individuals through rehabilitation and morale programs. The Red Cross shelters, feeds, provides emotional support to victims of disasters, teaches life-saving skills, international humanitarian aid, and again, supports our military families. They provide, again, service the Red Cross Central California Region to 10 counties across central California, and home, that's home to more than 4 million people. So, I'm very pleased to present this tonight, recognizing the Second Annual Operation Ride for the Red. I'll step down and present, if you'd like to say a few words.
Great. Thank you. Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, for the record, Melissa Livingston, proud to be county employee, but here tonight, in the capacity of the American Red Cross Ventura Chapters Board Chair. I first want to thank you all on behalf of Jim McGee, our CEO, all of our volunteers, our board members, and our staff in the Ventura County Region for your continued support of the mission. It's a very large and broad mission that addresses blood services, humanitarian services internationally, disaster relief, disaster response. And of course, what we're celebrating tonight is recognition of our SAF Program, our services to the Armed Forces, in addressing humanitarian support and relief and health care services to our military members and to our veterans. And so, I thank you. Many of you have been board members of the Red Cross in the past. Mr. Powers and Supervisor Long are currently President's Council members, and certainly a call-out to Linda Parks, who has rode in our first Ride for the Red, and we hope to see you out again this year for the Second Annual. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ken Bauer, our board member, and one of our lead organizers for the Ride for the Red.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Board, and Mr. Powers. Just a couple of words. I would be remiss in not thanking our 72 volunteers who service the Armed Forces. They meet every deployment. They meet every plane coming back for reintegration. They help the families while the service members are gone. And they do this with no pay and just, you know, provide these teddy bears and, and just counseling and, and just a lot of help. So, thank you to all the members that are providing services to them. For those of you that are interested, I know Linda knows about this, but we have a 100-mile ride that starts at 6:30, a 50-mile ride that starts at 8:30, a 30-mile ride that starts at 9:30, and then a family ride, which is a 5-mile ride, which starts at 10 o'clock. And then, everybody gets back about the same time, between 10 and 12, between 12 and 2, I mean. We have an after-party. We have, you know, music, and DJs catering is donating a lot of the food. So, it's, it's going to be a great event. Thank you.
And that all takes place at the Red Cross?
Yes, at the main Red Cross building, right here in Cal-Mario, 836 Cali Pleno.
Right. Well, here you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
For being here and talking to this wonderful opportunity for community support of Red Cross and all the great work that Red Cross does. So, we'll take a quick photo here. Here, you should hold this, not me. This isn't for me.
One more, please, please.
And it is a great ride. You get to go places that you probably have never seen before. I sure did. All different kinds of neighborhoods, and going through the Oxnard Plain and through the city of Oxnard. And it's the first Saturday after Veterans Day, right?
November 12th.
And good swag, too, I'd say. There you go.
We got a ride?
Wish you the best. We'll see how it goes. I'd like to. Thank you, Supervisor Zarlong. Thank you, Melissa and Ken. And we'll go then to our item 19, which is a presentation on the healthcare district, the Camarillo Healthcare District. And we have one speaker card, but, hi.
Yes, this is Madam Chair. This is Carol Ralston, CEO of the Camarillo Healthcare District. She's going to talk to us about the Adult Day Healthcare Center and dementia-friendly Ventura County.
Thank you. Oh, I'm about to lose this stuff here. Thank you, Chair. Do you, should I pull this?
Yeah.
Down. There we go. Chair Parks and Supervisors, Mr. Powers, I almost wish the Red Cross weren't gone. Maybe they can hear me. I do the endurance riding that they do, but on horseback, 25, 50, and 100 mile. And that should be our next thing, here in Ventura County. That should be awesome. So, I just give you a brief update about the Adult Day Center here in Camarillo. The district has operated a state-licensed Adult Day Center for more than 30 years. In the past couple of years, we've done a philosophical change in how our care is delivered. It began with a sense of dissatisfaction with the notion of just warehousing people during the day. So, we developed a very intentionally designed interior and an intentionally designed form of care delivery. And it's now a very warm, dignified, respectful, compassionate environment that offers interactive and meaningful activities during the day. This past year, we have delivered 15,000 service hours to families and their loved ones. These, most of our clients have some sort of cognitive impairment, dementia, Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, or some kind of brain injury, either a stroke or a traumatic injury. But anyone who feels like their loved one could benefit from additional stimulation and interaction and physical activity and compassionate care services during the day is welcome at the Adult Day Center here in Camarillo, serve the entire county. So, I really want to move into sharing about the healthcare district's participation in the Dementia Friendly America Initiative. I wish that you could hear what's in my head, which is thunderous applause for the Area Agency on Aging and the Director, Victoria Jump. And I also like to thank Supervisor Long for having us here and inviting this issue to your agenda tonight. This is fantastic. And I just want to read the definition of, you know what, I'm going to back up before I read that, because I want you to know why the healthcare district would be involved in this. As you know, the healthcare district specializes in the broad continuum of care. Everything care is what we do. Care management, transition from hospital to home, reducing avoidable readmissions, working with third-party payers to do so, providing evidence-based programming, person-centered care and delivery, caregiver and family training and education and support, health screenings, support services for everything, the whole continuum. And as you imagine, therefore, we work with clients with dementia, their families, every day, helping them access resources and navigate through community barriers that others don't even fathom would be a barrier. So, dementia, as we know it, affects 47 and a half million people worldwide. 60% of dementia cases are Alzheimer's. 33% of people 85 and older have Alzheimer's. 33% of people 85 and older have Alzheimer's. We know we're living longer, and that's what we're beginning to deal with. So, the Dementia Friendly America Initiative is a movement to more effectively, I guess, support and serve those people with dementia and their families and their care partners, to really drill down into communities and offer innovative solutions on the very basic living level. Dementia is an umbrella term for conditions involving cognitive impairment, symptoms that include memory loss, difficulties in communication, in language, in thinking. Dementia is not a normal part of aging. Short-term decreases in ability for short-term memory is normal, but dementia is significant and causes significant disruption in lives and the quality of lives of, of the people who have it, but also their family members. And we hear this definition as memory loss and difficulty thinking and remembering and communicating. And it's easy to tune it out. It's easy to just doze off for a minute. But the danger is, we think we know what it is, simply because we know the definition. I just want to share with you that dementia is anxiety and dread, because taking, helping mom get groceries turns into a scene, and everyone's impatient, and the checkout counter has a bunch of distracting items. Dementia is righteous indignation when the store clerk is short-tempered with dad, because although he looks very normal, his confusion and his questions seem intentionally antagonistic. Dementia is heartbreak, because you're losing this brilliant, loving, capable person whom you know to some invisible process. And others end up being mean, and they don't know the situation. Dementia is avoiding friends and family and life, because no one knows how to respond. It's awkward, long silences, and then the eventual, "Okay," walking away. I don't know what he meant or what she said just then. It's isolation. Your own community doesn't know how to respond to you. And then eventually, dementia is just the end. It's the end of feeling like you have a place in your own community, and the end of feeling connected and valued. We say no to that. And the Area Agency on Aging and Supervisor Long and, and Dementia Friendly America and Dementia Friendly Ventura County says no, absolutely no to that. With all of these efforts and with many, many, many more partners, we hope that this is the beginning, not the end, it's the beginning of appropriate supports and services for this issue from every level, from every level, every, schoolchildren, teach them what it is. Store clerks, utility workers, professional practices, everyone knows how to just accept and value these people. Some of this might be difficult, but it's not hard. And I just want to share, set this down here. I just want to share, several years ago, we printed some cards. I have them for you, but I'll explain them first. We printed these cards here. One of them says, "I am memory impaired and may require a few extra moments. Your cooperation and understanding is much appreciated." And you can just hand this to someone, and when you're in your early stages. The second card is for family members. The person with me is memory impaired and may require a few extra moments. When you get to the restaurant, to the store, you can discreetly hand that to whomever's helping you. The backside has emergency contact numbers. It's these sorts of things that we can use to make sure everyone feels valued and welcome. The healthcare district is also involved in the REACH program, REACH is from the Rosalynn Carter Institute. We're the only agency in California certified to provide the REACH program. It stands for something, we heard earlier about not having to remember acronyms. I'm going to try this. Resources for enhancing Alzheimer's caregivers' health. So, it's caregivers of people with Alzheimer's. REACH. The front of the brochure says, "It's okay to not be okay." And that's what we want. That's what Dementia Friendly America initiative is about. It's okay to not be okay, and to be accepted and valued. So, I have these brochures for you, too. This is a 12-session, no-cost program to sit with a social worker and talk about your own situation as you're dealing with dementia in your life or your loved one's life, developing a lot of coping skills. And it's evidence-based, so if you do it this way, there are some proven results. And I'd like to just say that Alzheimer's caregivers have terrible statistics about their own health. They're mostly female. They're mostly elder. They skip preventative screenings, and they skip refilling their own medications, and they become the second patient. And that's, again, what we have to deal with. If someone you know doesn't know if they're struggling with their caregiving duties, there's a quiz in here. Answer yes to any one of them, and you're struggling. It's a, it's a, just a beautiful program. So, I thank you for listening tonight. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for being willing to walk down this road with the service providers who are doing this. Until there's a cure, there are things we can do. Until there's a cure, there's Ventura County standing together. Until there's a cure, there's all of us. And I thank you. I have these for you. You'll need to take one- one of each of the rubber-banded cards.
Thank you. Thank you Kara. And Board Members, you'll recall when Victoria came forward with her update to the strategic plan from the AAA, that we took direction to have dementia-friendly put into that plan so we could start the work. And, and the Healthcare District has just been very strong and willing to really both do the good work they do, but to join hands with Victoria and with the AAA leaders and to advance this. So I look forward to the work. I, I will be there tomorrow morning, bright and early at 7:00 AM.
Thank you.
For an advisory panel breakfast.
Yes.
And the focus will be dementia-friendly. I will just do the kickoff of it. Of course, Victoria is our wonderful advocate and expert and, and present that as a panel discussion to the advisory, the community advisory breakfast tomorrow morning. So.
Thank you.
Bright and early.
Thank you all.
Thank you Kara.
Thank you for your passion for this, too. So this item then is a receiving file also?
Yes, we have a motion.
We have a motion from Supervisor Long, second from Supervisor Foy. All in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, that's approved unanimously then. Go ahead then, and we'll go.
We have a speaker card.
Pardon?
We have a speaker card.
Oh, I do have a speaker card. Thank you for reminding me. Carla Castilla, and this is regarding that presentation we just had. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, CEO and staff. One, thank you for being here in our backyard in Camarillo. And two, I just wanted to congratulate and thank the county for its leadership and intentional planning on dementia-friendly communities. Having seen it firsthand, not just in my family, but then also working for Congresswoman Lois Capps, who is a, you know, nurse by trade and a part of the Nursing Caucus in Congress, you know, working for funding and looking for ways to partner with local county governments and cities to really implement best practices and evidence-based practices, as Kara mentioned earlier. I mean, the statistics are pretty outstanding and scary. Over 5 million Americans have been diagnosed with dementia. One in eight over 65 are living with it. One in eight. I mean, we can count in this room. So the fact that the county, along with Ventura County Area Agency, Area on Aging, made this intentional problem-solving opportunity and placed it into the strategic plan is really key. And so, again, as I mentioned, being on the ground and having worked to look for not only funding for a cure, since we don't have one, but then also to create an experience for individuals who have been diagnosed with dementia, or their caregivers, to live a greater quality of life, to have the dignity by using, you know, some of the information that Kara just presented. So, you know, whether it's the cards, because I know that when I've been responsible for an individual with dementia, one of the most things that are unnerving is the individual doesn't want to be recognized as being different than anybody else, or that there's a special need being, you know, or it's more time. It's, it's a bit of a denial. And so oftentimes, a caregiver or a person that's with the individual needs that extra help to make the individual not feel even more insecure or unsafe. Because as it is, living in a world where you can't remember or are unclear of your surroundings, that fear that you come with is, it's very deep. So thank you to the county for making this intentional choice and bringing this national movement to our own backyard and to, you know, and to here in Camarillo through the service provider with the Camarillo Healthcare District. So I look forward, in whatever capacity, to continue the work to make sure that our older Americans and anyone diagnosed with dementia have the opportunity to live a dignified, safe, and secure life. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate those comments. It can be very frustrating, I know, for someone with dementia and what we can do to assist that and lower that level of frustration. It's a good thing.
If I might, Madam Chair, you can really go online for dementia-friendly, and there are excellent videos that give you just a sampling. We'll have, we'll have one tomorrow morning. It's a three-minute long that just gives you a sampling of what a person experiences in going through that. So powerful, powerful work.
And, and because, like you're saying, one in eight suffer from this, I think all of us have an inkling of knowing this, knowing about others because we, there are so many. And as the population of seniors continues to grow, there will be even a greater percentage, I fear. So, thank you for that presentation. Good to hear about the Camarillo Healthcare District. And let's, let's go ahead and move on. I know we have a couple of staff members looking forward to having their items. So we'll go on then to our next item on the agenda with our item 22 and the Fire District.
Twenty.
Twenty-first, sorry. Twenty and 22 with the Fire District, but not 21.
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, good evening. For the record, my name is Masood Araghi, Fire Marshal with the Fire Protection District. Every three years, a new fire code with amendments and updates and revisions is published. And item number 20 before you is a second public hearing adopting Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number 30.
And we have had this before, so this is a second reading?
Yes, second hearing.
A second hearing. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I want to ask a quick question.
Okay.
I got a little more research. We had, I think this is the part where we talk about fire sprinklers, right? There's in that new code?
Yes, correct. Item number 20 and 22.
Yeah, and 20, okay. And 22 is the, is it really more in the 22 is the code or in 20?
Item number 20 is the adoption of the ordinance. Item number 22 is the resolution, ratifying the resolution for building standards, which includes fire sprinklers, yes.
Okay, but so 20, is it more of the fire sprinkler in 22 than it is 20? I don't want to go to finish what we're doing.
Either way is okay.
Okay, because part of my issue is, you're, you're asking that in this new code, that we put fire sprinklers in all new homes, right?
Actually, that is a requirement in California.
In California, all new homes.
All new homes, yes.
What my, my question is, what happens when you remodel your home? What do you have to do?
In Ventura County?
Yes.
Anything that it is 50% of 1,000 square foot more, that will require retrofit. 50% of the existing or 1,000, whichever benefits the applicant.
Okay, but, so if somebody has a 2,500 square foot house and they add 1,000, 1,200 square feet, they got to go through the rest of 2,500 and put sprinklers in? Because they're over 1,000 square feet?
Or more than 50%. If it is more than 50% at that point.
Or 1,000, whichever is beneficial.
But whichever is beneficial to the applicant.
Yeah, I mean.
For example, if you have a small home and your addition is going to be more than 50%, but is less than 1,000, that does not trigger the sprinkler requirements.
Well, I guess 1,200 wouldn't trigger.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the key to me is, I just want to be careful with this because I have no problem with the new homes. It's easy, it's simple. It's very expensive to retrofit a home and put sprinklers in and tear up all the ceilings and everything else to do that. And so I really struggle with the idea that somebody has to go through and do that, so.
Well, only happens when you are more than 50%. By then, you're talking about a really great addition. You're talking about quite a bit of remodeling at that, at that time. So it will, it will, it will not be.
And when you say, is it the square footage I'm remodeling, or the, or the cost, or what? What is?
Square footage.
Square footage. So if I remodel, if I got a 4,000 square foot house, I remodel 2,100 square feet, I got to take the other 1,900 square foot and put sprinklers through. That's my only concern, is that we're just tearing up all that house to put, and a lot of times, that's very expensive to put sprinklers in a two-story house because you don't have room, and the, the ceilings are easier. And, and so is, are we the only county that does the requirement on that portion? Or is there a lot of other, most counties do that?
No, there are other counties that have the same requirements. I don't know the exact numbers, how many counties there are. But referring back to your question about tearing up the roof and all of that, there are other ways to install sprinklers that does not require to go through that extent, save remodeling. There are tie, there are ways you can install piping, that it can be hidden by soffits or the.
Well, I understand. It just gets, I mean, I have sprinklers in my home, and I've, I've done it, and I think it's a great deal, and that's not my issue. My issue is, I just know if I did 50% of my house and I had to go re-put sprinklers in, in your two stories, there's not as much room. It's easier in the second story when you got attics and some of those areas. It's just that you, you could add a lot of cost to this. And I'm just wondering if that's, is, is something that we have to do versus any new home. It's very inexpensive in a sense, putting sprinklers in a brand-new home. It's open, it's piped, it's that. I'm just, I'm just curious about that. I mean, is there so much evidence that this is a big deal, that we have to do this? Or, I mean, I, I don't want to be in a position where somebody says, "I can't remodel my house. It's going to cost me an extra $15,000 to put all these sprinklers, tear up all my ceilings, re-drywall, all that, thousands of square feet." And that's, that's some of my thoughts.
I have, we have had this in our ordinance for many years.
Yeah.
And I have not heard.
Okay, you haven't, you haven't had anything. Okay, okay, as long as, okay, if you're, if you're in a situation, I haven't had it either. I'm just talking about the only cost of it.
This, this, this has been in our ordinance for many years, and it has not changed.
Okay, so nothing's changed in that at all?
No.
Okay, good, that's fine. But like I said, I haven't heard, I just look at the cost of what that's going to do. But if people aren't complaining about it and everybody's happy, then, and you've been doing it for years, then I'm good with it. Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion Supervisor Saragosa to approve, and a second from Supervisor Foy. Any objections? Not seeing any, that is then approved unanimously. And then you have the next item, which is 22.
Yes, the item 22 is adoption of a resolution ratifying the Fire District Ordinance 30, and it's Chapter 9, enabling the district to enforce fire life safety building standards within unincorporated area of the county.
Do we have the questions or a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from Supervisor Saragosa, second from Supervisor Long. All in favor say aye. No objections or abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I just want to add one other item. As a longtime resident of Ventura Ca, I mean, of Camarillo, and also working in Camarillo, I'd like to thank Supervisor Long. It's a great city to live in, as we heard earlier. I take my son to the library quite often. He enjoys it. It is a magical place. It is something that is absolutely a beautiful place to visit, but I appreciate it. Thank you. It's a great place to be in. Thank you so much. Good evening.
And now, let's go back to our poor gentleman staff member for the Behavioral Health Department, who has waited patiently for the second of his agenda items. I believe that's 24. Is that correct?
Correct. John Shipper with Behavioral Health. Item 24 is requesting the approval of a contract with Telecare Corporation to provide the assist AOT services. Telecare will provide outreach, engagement, and treatment for the assist clients. This item is in conjunction with the grant funding approved in item 23.
Thank you, Dr. Ship.
Would you recommend an action?
Second.
Motion is second. Seeing any objections? Not seeing any abstentions? That is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item 25, and this is my request that we appoint for, but a short-term, but a term nonetheless.
Short-term.
From November 29th to January 2nd, Supervisor Long to the CSAC Board of Directors. And I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Second from Supervisor Saragosa. Are there any objections or anything like that? Well, since you're, go ahead and approve that unanimously. And, and not only approve it, but also thank Supervisor Long for her willingness to continue to serve on that board. I know it takes a, a lot of time and sometimes a lot of travel. So thank you so much. And it really does benefit our county and the information and advocacy that the CSAC, which is the California State Association of Counties, provides.
They're going to miss your CSAC.
No, she's just agreed to contract with us. It's perfect, yeah.
Contract.
Welcome to CSAC, John.
No, no.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is item 26, also a recommendation and from myself. And this is to adopt a resolution, once again, recognizing the Ventura County Arts Council as the official designated agency to execute the 2016 through 2019 State Local Partnership Program grant contracts with the California Arts Council. And we're lucky to have Mary Travis, Margaret Travis, that helps us with that. I'll go ahead and make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Supervisor Long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? If not, that is also passed unanimously. Our next item and last item is our County Executive Office, and this is regarding the approval of medical, dental, and vision plan rates.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Parks, member of the board, board, and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Tracy, so I'm the Benefits Manager here at the county for both employees and retirees. The recommended actions before you tonight will establish the medical, dental, and vision rates and plans for our county retirees for the 2017 plan year. On October 4th, your board approved the Flexible Benefits Program plans and rates for Plan Year 2017. And this was for both our active employees and our non-Medicare eligible retirees. Our non-Medicare eligible retirees and their dependents may participate in the same plans as active employees with the same benefits. For our Medicare eligible retirees, we are recommending to your board that we continue to offer three medical plans: the Ventura County Healthcare Plan Medicare COB HMO, the Kaiser Senior Advantage Plan, and the Anthem Medicare Preferred PPO Plan. The Anthem Medicare Preferred PPO Plan will be replacing the United Healthcare Senior Supplement Plan. And this will be to coincide with the switch from UHC to Anthem for our active employee plans. This will allow us to continue to offer combination plans for our retiree families who have both non-Medicare and Medicare participants. Rate increases for the Medicare plans will range from 1.1% to 14.5%. We are also recommending that we continue to offer the MetLife Dental PPO Plan and the MES Vision Plan to our retirees. These are the same plans and benefits that are available to our active employees. And the dental rates for retirees will actually be going down 2% for Plan Year 2017, and the vision rates will be decreasing 18%. As a result of your board's leadership, reasonably priced health plan benefits continue to be available to our retirees and their dependents, and we thank you for that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board on this? Any comments?
I was just going to.
I just, just for me, I, I appreciate you, everybody working through and all the stuff you did to get to these rates and where you're at. And, and I know that there's been a comment or two about, you know, rates going up and doing some things. But I think over the years, we have to realize how much money and how much work was in to keep the rates as low as possible, and how, and the thousands of dollars that employees have saved over those years. And I still think, if you look at the general market out there, they're still getting an unbelievable deal for what they've got. And it's, it's, you know, it's worked out well. I know some people don't like the idea of, you know, rate increases and bigger rate increases, but, you know, the counties work so hard to keep those rates down. And, you know, with experience and what's happened, it, some of these rates go up. But I, I mean, I, I think we can't forget on how much money has been saved over the years and, and what it's been good for the county employees with that. And I think it's, it's critical. And so I bet I appreciate you doing whatever you could to keep these rates where they're at, and I know they could have been higher. And so it, it's great. So I wanted to just make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Powers?
Well, thank you Supervisor. That's why I wanted to recognize Tracy and her team and Sean for doing this work. You're sat with the employees, and these rates here, they were 7% better on the medical, and reductions in dental and vision rates. That's almost unheard of. So just, a lot of work goes on behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And with that, do we have a motion?
Sure.
Sure, we have one. And that's from Supervisor Foy, second from Supervisor Long. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, sure.
Okay, or say sure. No objections or abstentions? And Mr. Palmer, does that conclude our agenda there?
Yes, ma'am, except for closed session.
Except for closed session. Thank you. Then I'll go ahead and close our meeting now, and we'll adjourn from closed session. Thank you. And thank you to the City of Camarillo for hosting us.
Yes, thank you all for being here. Thank you so much. Thank you Board Members.